Debate of the Candidates for School Committee. We have six positions and seven people running for those. And we have one person who is running a little late, Keith Minio. Everyone else is here, and their names are in front of them when they're speaking. My name is Dick Proudy. I'm a former high school teacher in Manchester. And then for 35 years, I was with Project Adventure doing teacher training and experiential education. So we're going to, we've got a series of five questions. Each candidate's going to get a chance to speak to that question for two and a half minutes. And they can comment on somebody else's, but this isn't really an official debate. There's no rebuttal particularly, but you can comment on other answers if you would like to, of course. All right. So the first question has to do with the school building question, which has been sort of contentious at times. After the consolidated East Gloucester Veterans School construction is complete, all eyes will turn to the planning for the Beeman School and the Plum Cove School. While the Commonwealth of Massachusetts supports construction of modern consolidated schools that can provide us in Lanesville, can you provide us in Lanesville? And the Lanesville Community Center that's sponsoring this is particularly concerned with that. Was there any evidence that test scores or any measures of well-being improved at the West Parish School after new building was constructed? The Plum Cove School is considered by many as the best in the system. Is there any evidence that closing down this school will improve the test scores and well-being of the students in emerged new building? And we're going to start with Bill Melvin and go down two and a half minutes each. Go ahead, Bill.
Great. Before I answer the question, I want to thank the Lanesville Community Center for inviting us here tonight and giving us a chance to answer some pertinent questions to the Gloucester community with regards to the school system and the school committee. To me, the first question, and they're kind of long-winded questions, and I appreciate the two and a half minutes to be able to answer the questions. Whether I use it all or not, we'll see. But to me, the first question really goes to the heart of public education. I'm not so sure that building a new school is going to improve the test scores. And I don't think there's evidence, per se, of that at West Parish. But I do know that it's a new facility. I knew, I know that it's a greener facility than the old West Parish. I know that it's a healthier school. I know that there's been some cost savings involved by building a new school. And I know that it's a positive learning environment. It's not an old building. All three of my kids went through West Parish, and there was not a single time that I didn't go into that building where I didn't say, this place is a little bit tired and it's a little bit old. And certainly supported the building of a new school there. When I say it goes to the heart of public education, what I really mean is, and someone that grew up in a community like Manchester that, you know, was an outstanding public school system, is that the one thing I did notice in looking at the test scores is that you might see an influx at West Parish. Over the last 15 years, you've seen an influx of English as a second language learners. You've seen an influx of special needs kids, special education kids. That's going to have an effect on the test scores. Kids that get a supplement to their, you know, to their lunch, all those types of things are on the rise, or have been on the rise at West Parish. That's totally fine, as long as, as long as you know that. And I think you could take a good student from any school, put them in just about any environment, and they're going to be a good learner. The question is, what are we doing for the kids that maybe are on the lower end of that spectrum, that need help and that need assistance? And I just think a new school, a combined school, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. And I think it's a step in the right direction. I do compare it a little bit, I wasn't going to add this, but I compared it a little bit to Little League. Like, we used to have a league that had two separate parts of the city, and then we went to one part. All of a sudden, you're playing with kids that you might not even see until you're in middle school or high school. You might see kids show up on a bike with no glove and no bat, and playing with kids on the same team from completely different economic surroundings. And I just think it makes for a very healthy and very collaborative type of environment for kids. So I'm all for the combining of Plum Cove and Beeman when that time comes. And that's my answer. Thanks.
So in 2015 or thereabouts, the school committee voted to move forward with a consolidated school plan for elementary schools. It's important, in my opinion, that we keep moving forward with that plan. We have at least 10 years to sort of work out whatever kinks we need to, to sort of make that plan come to fruition. And I have every confidence in the world that the teams at both Plum Cove and Beeman will work together to sort of make magic happen, similar to how Vets and East Gloucester are doing now, to sort of make that transition happen smoothly. Similar to Bill, you know, it's also important to keep in mind that Plum Cove has the smallest number of high-needs students in our, in our school district, which can obviously impact how an overall school performs on certain metrics. As we consolidate, we diversify our elementary schools, which is nothing but a strength, in my opinion. And then lastly, we can't ignore that there are some teachers who work for 20, 30 years in one building. It doesn't, we can't forget that their morale is just as important as the test scores. And it's important that they are working in a building where they have access to just as much resources as every other school system in the state, as West Parish, to do their job well and safely in a building that's clean, new, and updated.
Thank you. Laura.
Thank you. So in thinking about this question, I talked to some West Parish parents. And from the perspective of parents at West Parish, the evidence of well-being is overwhelming. I heard stories from before, the new building of mold, asbestos, bathrooms with no working sinks, ceiling tiles falling. And, you know, so the evidence of well-being is really quite clear for those whose children attend these schools. And as Samantha just said, there's also an added and potentially hard-to-measure benefit of teachers who are happy to work in a healthy, safe environment, where they have access to technology, space, the spaces that they need. I was surprised to learn that Plum Cove doesn't have a freestanding room for a library. So for me, like, that, that's something that we would definitely want to offer the kids of Plum Cove, right? That's, that's a phenomenal, they've made, there's been creative work by the principal and by the parents, and they have a library on the stage in the cafeteria. But the kids of Plum Cove, like the kids at Webb's Parish and at EGS and Vets, and all of our kids deserve to have a library. And I think moving forward, and again, it will be at least 10 years, the idea of combining, consolidating Beeman and Plum Cove into a modern, healthy, energy-efficient school building feels like, you know, a win for all families and schools, all students. And the one thing to always keep in mind is, we couldn't, and part of the plan to consolidate schools, is that Gloucester can't build five brand-new schools. That's not an option. So all of our children, though, deserve the same access to facilities and opportunity in their buildings. So we have what I, what appears to me to be a very good plan to move forward. We have EGS, Vets now, and then we're moving forward in the next decade to Plum Cove and Beeman, to give all of our students, from the English language learners to the high-needs kids, and to the kids who don't come in with those issues, to give them all the same benefits when they walk into a building.
Thank you, Laura.
So I've been on the committee for a long time, and one of the biggest complaints that we've always had was the conditions of some of our buildings. When the potential to have this new combined school for East Gloucester and veterans became a reality, because the Massachusetts School Building Authority invited us in to be a partner with them in this new school, it was, you know, you always want to be on their list, but while you're on their list is never a good thing. It means you are a school of the neediest variety. And we know that our elementary schools are all 70 years old, although I think Plum Cove is a little bit less. But we know we want to have these learning environments for our students and for our teachers. When we were doing public hearings on the combined school of East Gloucester and veterans, we had 100% of teachers sign on and show up, show support. That's how much they desperately needed and wanted this new school with which to serve their children the best. As Bill said, educating a child is, and test scores are very, you know, there are a lot of factors that go into that. And I think you will see that there are many high-performing schools that are larger in the Commonwealth, and you will see many small schools that are, that are high-performing, and vice versa. So I think what we've been trying to do educationally is having cohesive and consistent curriculum to impact students in a positive way and in a consistent way. It helps evaluate teaching practice and how we make progress for each student, each and every student, as we talk about them. A new school will provide things that I know Beeman and Plum Cove probably are making due, as all of our schools have made do. But it's, you know, the, you have music and art rooms, you have special education spaces, which are compromised at some, at our four schools now, until we combine East Gloucester and veterans. Those, providing those spaces are extremely important for those children and for those teachers to be able to do what they, that they need to do for our students. I will say that with West Parish, when it opened up, one of the things that the teachers said is, oh, my gosh, it's so quiet in here. It's so calm. And, and we can really, when it's time to learn, we can really focus on learning. There's not this chaos that's constantly around us. So kids can be little kids and have a great time in the new school, and they'll have the spaces that they need. New playgrounds, which is, you know, quite a benefit as well, because, of course, it's every child's favorite class of the day. And I see no drawback. And we did put forth a very thoughtful process to come up with combining our schools into three schools and consolidating into three schools. And financially, there's just no other alternative but to do that for the taxpayers, because, of course, we have, you know, needs at the high school and needs at the middle school, and who knows what each decade will bring. So hopefully, we'll continue on this path of not necessarily building new schools all the time, but our schools will need significant investment from the community. You know, so, so we're trying to address those. And, you know, thankfully, new school that will come online in two years is another step in that direction.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Is that Robert or Richard?
I'm against combining Plum Cove and Beeman Elementary School. I believe in their merger will hurt the demographics of the children. Plum Cove, according to School Digger, is ranked 151 out of 935 public elementary schools, and the Commonwealth with 206 students. Beeman is 329, 329 students, ranked 553rd with 935 public elementary schools en masse. In 2021, the Gloucester Public Schools System performed better than 38.8% of the districts in the Commonwealth. That is 0.05% up from 2020. We all know how 2020 turned out. Small classes are a better opportunity for kids to have the one-on-one attention and to elevate lagging MCAS scores. Smaller schools mean a low student-teacher ratio, which means more to focus on your child's education in more intimate and personalizing learning environment. Students show the smallest school benefits children socially. Smaller schools operate more like a community, not a corporation. The bigger the school, the more likely kids will fall through the cracks. Gains from smaller class size happens to be the most effective in elementary school. These gains are the strongest in the class from 20 students or less, and are stronger for students that are disadvantaged, minorities, immigrants, and those with certain disabilities. These gains carry into upper grades as well, and these students are more likely to stay in school, earn better grades, and are less likely to be retained. According to a study posted in American Journal of Public Health, smaller class sizes in elementary school is the most effective, the most public health interventions, as these students are more likely to graduate and earn more money, which means more tax revenue. They also enjoy significantly better health. Teachers are also not overwhelmed. More students means a wide variety of students with varying learning styles and level of achievement. They currently want to build a new school on top of Beeman Softball Field, which is taking over yet another ever-diminishing green space. This one displaces groups such as the Rivetale Rockets, other softball teams, flag football practices, not to mention kids with frankly hangout in the playground. The neighborhood invites yet another problem with potential dangerous traffic congestions and safety issues, such as we have with West Parish and soon-to-be East Gloucester Veterans School. None of these neighborhoods ask for or deserve such concerns. Both and before we do anything at all, there also needs to be a full, comprehensive, accurate traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Thomas.
I'm very happy that I got to go last on this question, because I got to hear everybody else's answers. And I just want to say that a lot of people stepped up and thanked me and encouraged me to run for this. It's the first time I've ever run for anything. And so I also want to thank my colleagues here, the other candidates, because I realize how much time and effort it takes to contribute and to be willing to do that. I think that it's a special kind of person. So as far as this question goes, when I first saw it, it felt to me that it was aimed more at the incumbents, because there's a lot of history, obviously, with these issues that somebody who's a newcomer like myself has not been intimately aware of, the different conversations and arguments and back-and-forth negotiations that have happened. So my approach is, first of all, I want to question the question a little bit, because it mentions test scores as being an indicator. And as a teacher myself, I don't have a big belief in teaching to test scores. And I'm not saying that it's wrong to do that either. But, for example, I worked in college admissions for many years, and at a certain point, we've, we pretty much across the board, colleges have now abandoned the SAT, the standardized testing, because it measures students' abilities to take tests more than it measures their actual intelligence, intelligence or knowledge. So having test scores being sort of the arbiter of what we need to do for facilities, to me, feels a little bit contrived. And I would rather focus on what the needs of the students are and what the needs of the faculty, the teachers, the staff, the people who are involved, who have to work in those spaces. I know as a teacher that facilities are really important, and sometimes when the facilities are not doing what they're designed to do, or they're outdated, that it creates a lot of problems in the classroom and being able to deliver the curriculum. Also, I have a daughter who's three. So I live on Eastern Ave, which is just across the street from the Veterans School, and I'm really, really happy that she's going to have a new school to go to. So that's, I'm saying that without knowledge of all the other issues that are behind that, because I wasn't there. So, yeah, my, my goal, if I become a school committee member, an elected member of the school committee, will be to work with the mayor and all the other members of the committee, and to find the right solutions and try to do what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, we move on to question number two. And we're going to start with Samantha this time. Gloucester School under great stress during this time of COVID for the last year and a half. Do teachers, students, and parents seriously pull together or pulled apart during the pandemic? And are there lessons for this community going forward in the past 18 months?
Thank you. I really appreciate this question, because I, at least for the incumbents, it really gives us sort of an opportunity to sort of tell a story and to really highlight, in my opinion, a group that really hasn't been highlighted enough to sort of help make this past year and a half successful. So when considering the enormous successes we've achieved as a district in the past year and a half, it's important to keep in mind how we got there. The administrators at each school, along with the central office, staff, were absolutely the most influential driving force behind prioritizing in-person learning. Through many, many long, long meetings, each, each and every member of the school committee echoed this priority and voted for a hybrid model that allowed as much in-person learning time as possible. As you may remember, the Massachusetts Teachers Association were very hesitant about in-person learning to start and advocated for a delayed start to the school year in an in-person fashion. The Gloucester Teachers Association followed suit, but through a very long and tough negotiation process, the GTA and the school committee came to an agreement that both prioritize safety and in-person learning. I think that if, as a district, we can overcome these really tough conversations that were really, that felt like, in a lot of ways, life or death for many people, we can absolutely overcome any other difficult task and any other difficult conversation that comes our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Laura.
Thank you. So I think the way this community pulled together in the past year was remarkable, and it's something Gloucester should be incredibly proud of. I know that on the school committee, this required a lot of listening, a lot of asking questions, and above all, respect for each other and the process. So I just want to say, as Samantha said, we had lots of meetings, we worked with the central office, the administrators, there were lengthy negotiations with the teachers, we worked with the nurses, we worked with the staff. There were so many pieces of this puzzle that had to work together. And I think we all understood that our leaders, our teachers, our nurses, our school staff, our bus drivers, everyone had the best interests of the students as the center of this decision-making. And I know that as a parent, what allowed me to send my children back into school was knowing that this was, this was the center of this discussion, and this is how we got our schools open, that everyone was 100% behind how do we open safely for the students, safely for the teachers, and give our kids the best possible year during a global pandemic. So it's a remarkable accomplishment, and I really want to highlight some of the pieces of this accomplishment that I think we can continuously move forward with. We listened to each other. Families listened, parents listened, you know, when you have small kids, they're not really part of the conversation, but older kids, we listened to what they said. And by we, I mean sort of Gloucester Public Schools and Gloucester as a community. We listened to the experts and to the facts. So we were incredibly helped by our Board of Health, who sat with us, sat with us through the school committee, through all of this decision-making, and told us how we could do this based on data and facts. We had respectful debate and disagreement, and there was disagreement. This didn't all happen, this didn't all have, we weren't all together on this. And we worked together, even through our disagreements, respectfully and listening to each other. And then we all worked together, again, Gloucester Public Schools, for the students and families of Gloucester, and how we could support them in the most positive way. And I think all of those lessons are hugely important as we move forward with all of the challenges. We're still in a pandemic, we're building a new school building, we, you know, we have buildings to have upkeep, we have children with anxiety, there's lots of challenges. But listening to each other in the way we did, with respect and with a respect for the facts and the experts, I think got us to a place of real, of real benefit to our students. And I'm, I'm so proud of what Gloucester Public Schools did in the past year.
Thank you, Laura. Kathy.
Okay. So people may not remember that much, but we, in the spring of the year, that year, our superintendent was retiring, and we had to do a search for a brand-new superintendent via Zoom interviews. And we, I think, you know, did a phenomenal job picking a leader that truly cares about each and every student in Gloucester. And when he took over on July 1st, he had a very strong conviction of getting our kids in school. He knew and understood the kind of community we had, he knew some of the challenges families have at home and kids have at home. And he also knew that to provide the best education possible, we needed to be in school as much as possible. And Sam and Laura have done a great job talking about what the process is in terms of meetings and everything. And we also have to thank the city, who, before we even really asked the question, the, Mike Hale and his Department of Public Works had a plan in place to put $700,000 into our buildings for purification systems. So the investment that we didn't quite know was possible was already being thought about on how do we possibly come together as a community and provide, you know, as safe a situation as we possibly could. Our custodians went through training, our teachers at the beginning of the school year, and all the staff went through training during the kind of delayed start for students. There were 10 days. Our teachers listened, our teachers were part of our, you know, commenting as we were trying to grapple with this situation of how best to kind of keep families reassured that we had their best interest in mind and that people would be really good about the It, it really was quite a situation where it takes a village to educate our kids, and this village came together like, you know, you would never dream of how, how great it was. And I do, and I will say, I have a teenager who was going into his junior year, and he kept saying, we need to be in school, we want to be in school. They had spent months in the spring without peers, without friends, without, you know, without that normal social development. So forget just the academic piece, but all of our kids were missing out on that social development that is so important. So at least with a hybrid model, they had some version of that. And I think, you know, my current phrase is always better some than none. I think we did beyond some. We did an amazing job for our families. It wasn't smooth all the time, and I'm sure many kids and families struggled, like all of us did, in our own personal lives. But I think we did as great of a job as we possibly could on behalf of this community and on behalf of our kids.
Thank you, Kathy.
Richard.
The past year and a half has been difficult due to our unique challenges of coping with COVID-19. Parents had to step up and be teachers, educators, and reinvent teaching through a computer screen. And because of the unknown, the system worked. Parents who became teachers at home had it rough due to the kids being pushed into a restricted, isolated, sometimes frustrating, unfamiliar style of learning. It was a whole new world for all of us. Starting in September 2020, teachers were told to return to half-days at school, which continued through April of 2021. Full-time in-school learning resumed after April vacation. Governor Baker visited West Parish and told the news outlets throughout the state that Gloucester Public Schools were a role model for how it should have all been done. As a parent, I am grateful to know that and proud of what they've achieved. Our frontline teachers have gone out of their way to help our children succeed under very challenging circumstances. Throughout all of this, the physical and emotional hurdles of mask mandates have been an adjustment for everyone, especially our kids. The spacing requirements were a real test of creativity and familiar teacher methods had to be done to reevaluate. We have moved ever forward and preserved. The community as a whole did a fantastic job making sure our kids had everything they needed. In particular, we are all in this together group. Many thanks to them, the DPW employees who put forth an amazing effort, also the janitorial staff who deep cleaned the schools every day to ensure our children's safety. I, as a parent, am extremely happy with the way the teaching staff, community, and students all pulled together to get through this unknown. But we have, we have learned a whole lot since then, and it's time to reevaluate our policies. Kids are being left behind. Not only are children more likely to experience mental health issues from certain COVID protocols, it also is affecting children and teachers physically. If our policies are harming the children, I'd say it's If our policies are harming the children, I'd say it's time to reevaluate the policy. Thank you.
Yeah, I can only speak from my perspective as a parent on this because I was not on the school committee. And my daughter, who's three and a half, she started Gloucester preschool in the middle of the pandemic, and we really questioned that, you know, we had to think hard about whether or not we were going to send her into that environment, but we knew that she needed it, and we did it. And I'm very happy that we did it, and I agree with what Kathy said, that I, I came away from this feeling proud of our school system and feeling proud of Gloucester. One of the reasons I wanted to run is that I feel like the schools in Gloucester get a bad rap. If you look at Zillow, for example, and my wife looks at that, and she says, "Oh, you know, we have to move because it's this rating." And this is part of why I wanted to learn more, and when I talked to the city councilor about it and investigated on my own, just talking to residents and other people, they said, "Well, the best way for you to do that is to run for school committee, and then you'll really know what's going on." So this, this has a lot to do with why I'm here today. Now, back to the question, and let me just review it again. The lessons, yeah. So I'm a teacher, I'm a full-time teacher, and I've been teaching online for over 10 years. And I designed curriculum for both hybrid classes and for in-person classes and for asynchronous online classes. These are college-level courses, including education courses. So I have a lot of experience with remote learning personally as a teacher and as an administrator, and also as a student, because I do continuing education and study online myself. So this is not a new thing, this idea of distance learning. In February, or actually, it was March of 2020, we went completely, at where I work, at my college, we went completely to a distance learning format, and we were really ready for that. We kept the students, we kept their educational goals, helped them to progress, and it was really hard. It was hard on the teachers, it was hard on the administrators and the students, and there was a mental health toll. There was a lot of anxiety, there was, there was a lot of people who were unable to continue at that time, and they had to take mental health breaks and so forth. But what happened is when we came back, and we've come back fully now, is what surprised us is that the enrollment spiked through the roof. So what we learned from that is that it's not only a different modality of learning, but it's what the students want. The students want to be in classrooms, they want to see their friends, they want to have those social experiences, and they want to be taught in a classroom, and I think that's where teaching has to take place. Now, there is a place for the remote model, and that could be very useful in Gloucester schools. And so that's something I think we can look at, we can preserve from that experience and maybe keep the good things from that, and as we go back to our previous in-person modality. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Bill?
Yes. Just to kind of echo what Tom said earlier, going last, it does give you the opportunity to hear everybody, but everybody else, but also gives you the opportunity not to say anything original, so, which I'm about to do. I do think that, I think the teachers, the entire system did a wonderful job with it. And I'm one of those people that's always a little bit leery about how we're going to do stuff and how well it's going to go. Well, I think the Gloucester Public Schools did a phenomenal job. I sat in on a lot of those Zoom calls with debating how to handle things led by Superintendent Lemison. I just couldn't have been any more impressed with the way things went down. As a coach at the high school, I coached JV basketball down there, and I coached baseball. I saw firsthand the effort put in by the people inside the schools to make sure that things were done the right way, that, you know, they were very strict about making sure you had your mask on, very little transmission happened within the Gloucester Public Schools. And there wasn't a moment where you walked around with your mask down thinking you were just going to get away with it. It just didn't happen. And, and the kids, the other thing I learned is that kids are pretty adaptable, you know, kids can adjust on the fly much better than me. I'm almost 60 years old, and my days of adjusting are coming to an end. I just don't, I don't adjust well, but kids really do handle it pretty well. The other thing that concerns me is a little bit is, you know, decisions like this, they're not made in a vacuum, you know, like people don't, you don't just come up with an idea and say, "Hey, that's the way I want it." There's a lot of stakeholders involved, there's a lot of people involved, there's a lot of experts, a lot of people smarter than I am that have come to the conclusion, "Let's stay in the masks until we figure this out or we get a handle on it." And I think that's okay. I think it's okay for me as a school committee member, a potential school committee member, to sit back and say, "That person probably knows a little bit more than I do. Let me, let me take their guidance and run with that." So, so I guess that, that's it. It wasn't, certainly wasn't perfect, but it seemed to work. The other two groups that I want to note, just put on, would just kind of recognize as one, the parents, I think, they get overlooked a little bit sometimes, and that, my wife and I would sit at home saying, "Boy, thank goodness our kids are out of school," because it was a load on the parents. I can't imagine working full-time, being able to handle a kid at home, hybrid learning, all that type of stuff. And the other ones are the teachers, having to be creative, you know, other people are sort of on the, on the outskirts of that process. But the teachers, a day-to-day, they're in there every day, creating a learning environment for the kids in a very difficult situation. So again, I didn't say anything original after listening to my fellow candidates, but I thought, on the whole, I thought the school system did a wonderful job with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And you perhaps were more original than you thought.
Thank you.
So we're going to go now to Kathy, first.
What about me?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I, sorry, Laura. Question number three to Laura Weisum to start. This is the anxiety question. So, you know, we've had a lot of fear and anxiety in young people, and clinical depression's on the rise. We wonder how students are coping with a lot of issues, the climate change, news gets worse every year, racial injustice issues, we had a big year with the George Floyd stuff, the historical context of that, the LGBTQ issues are now front and center in our schools, mask mandates concerns, there are parents who are totally against them who protest, and they have to deal with all of this. So is an appropriate role, is there an appropriate role for teachers and support staff to guide students through these difficult topics? Or should the school system just say, "No, that's controversial, teachers shouldn't address a controversial topic"? What do you think as the school committee, and what is the role for a school committee to encourage engagement with these issues or discourage it? And I also know there are student clubs forming on some of these issues, is that a good thing, or would you encourage more of that? How would you deal with that? Laura?
So firstly, just to sort of be clear about the role of the school committee, we, we don't make educational decisions. Like, that's not the role of the school committee. We hire a superintendent, and he's in charge of, of the, oops. And he's-
I'd like to see your face.
Thank you.
We can understand you better.
That's okay, thank you. So he's in charge of educational decisions. We don't, we are not related to what specific things are taught in school. So just to be really clear about that.
Yes, but I, you are aware that-
We are, we are aware.
There are many school boards across the country, these topics are being taken on.
I'm going to keep with my answer, yes. So we are living in a time of huge societal and environmental transition and upheaval. And of course, our students are members of our society. They, they're, no, they feel this. They bring their fears and anxieties into school the same way we bring them into our lives. And teachers and support staff, including adjustment counselors, are there to help our students learn and process the world around them, especially at the middle and high school level, but I will say even elementary, kids are learned, are learning to think critically about information presented to them. At the elementary level, by second grade, my daughter was learning to distinguish between a fact and an opinion. This was an actual exercise, and it's continued in third grade. How do we determine what is a fact and what is an opinion and why?
Do you think she could tell him?
She sure could. She sure could. And so as our kids get into middle and high school, that of course deepens, and they learn to think critically about the information presented to them, to ask questions, and to draw their own conclusions. I often think, when you listen to Principal Cook at the high school, he often talks about, describes this ignite-chunk-chew way of learning, that that's what they want. They want kids to be, you know, to ignite with the excitement of this and to take pieces of it and learn how to process this information. And that's, that is one thing our schools, I think, is the, one of the roles of our schools is to help students think critically and process information, because they have to learn to do that themselves in, to be, to be adults, right? And I think our staff is there to support and guide that process. They're not, obviously, there to take political stances, and I know that our staff is extremely careful not to, but they are there definitely to support students as they think critically about the world around them. And as students are processing anxiety, depression, feelings personal or not, we have adjustment counselors and other support staff whose role is to help our students feel safe and secure so that they can learn.
Great.
We know that there are many challenges since I've been on the-
Oh.
I think he's going to say, uh-
Go ahead, just one more.
Okay. Okay. So since I've been on the committee, there have been different issues that have come up in the education world. Early on, it was a lot about a district special education placements, and then it kind of moves on to social, emotional learning, and that's where I think this fits into how our students' mental health is considered. It's extremely important that we're able to engage, engage with them. We have put a lot of budget priority in new positions to help with some of these things, like anxiety. There's a lot of professional development around a lot of these topics that students deal with. And, you know, we try to do some educational or forums where parents can also participate and get a presentation by somebody expert in the field. So we are trying to do a lot that support families and students in this area. In terms of controversial topics, I will say that we have a policy that's very clear that our teachers are there to teach students how to think, not what to think. And, and so I do think controversial topics should be discussed, not led, but discussed, and, and have, have kids know that it's, I mean, what better ground to do it on but in a classroom where you have a teacher that can facilitate so you can disagree but figure out how to get beyond that disagreement? Sharing information, I mean, I know in our school committee debates, or not debates, but our deliberations, we're all there to kind of get to the best answer. And so somebody brings a point of view or a background that really makes you either change your mind or, or just add something so much more to the outcome. And I think our schools are great grounds for things like, you know, for teaching kids the power of, of, as you say, fact versus opinion and how to process that and how to think going forward so that they can, you know, be the ones questioning when, when something doesn't feel right.
Keith?
Hi.
Keith has just joined us after having some work in, in family issues.
Yeah.
So we're on question three, Keith.
Hey, yeah, so, yeah, this is something that's actually a big reason why I'm running for school committee. Yeah, yeah, there are a lot of concerning topics. One of the things is, there has been an increase in suicides, suicides, and I think a lot of this has to do with some of these issues here on this list. You know, just, it's how, how it's framed, I think that's the delicate balance. And for me, a lot of these things like climate change, things, things that I consider appropriate would be acting locally and thinking globally and being good stewards of the environment. There's some things that are super politicized on this list, and that's a shame, and it makes it more difficult to talk about in the classroom setting. And for instance, when we're talking about solar power, wind power, and how carbon dioxide is a pollutant, that is, that is flat, flatly untrue. Carbon dioxide is a natural gas that is responsible for the life on this planet, and without it, no life would exist. We were dangerously close to, to having a critical level where all life on this planet would cease to exist. We've rebounded from that. We're, we're actually still in an ice age, and we're just in an interglacial period. So at this point, what was it, 10,000, 20,000 years ago, we had miles of ice above us. We're still rebounding from that. We already had our sea levels rise, I don't know what the figure is, but it was exponential. Right now, it's millimeters. And a millimeter every year over 100 years adds up to something, don't get me wrong, but it's, there's a lot of natural processes, and demonizing things like carbon dioxide and carbon in general is, is I think a shame, because I went through advanced biology in class, and, and it's the makeup of life, and it's the greening of the earth. The more carbon dioxide you release into the atmosphere, the more, more plants you get, and as you know, they sequester carbon. That's what they're made up of. So just, it's, it's part of that, where you tell kids that the world is going to hell and, and it's their fault because they're living on it, I, I don't think that's appropriate. So that's, that's my stance on a lot of these things.
Thank you, Keith.
In my profession, I see firsthand what all of these heavy adult burdens do to the mental well-being of kids, which often results in physical action. They're on total overload emotionally and physically. When asked for guidance, teachers and other educators can direct high school students to resources Gloucester High School offers, such as the Gay-Straight Alliance, Human Rights, and Gloucester Youth Council. At that age, level, at that level, kids have more maturity and are better able to think critically about the information they receive, or at least have a better idea of the questions they're being asked. The community as a whole has differing opinions on this, and we all have the right to stand up to believe in what we believe. But history, math, language arts, science needs to be all taught in its alternate form with all political input and interpretation from educators. Political opinions and individual philosophy do not belong in the classroom. Good educators do not use these biases to pit students against students and divide them. Students all have varying beliefs, background religions, experience, et cetera. As to mask mandates, it's a big topic and one that is personally concerning to me. We've had year after year of flu and other diseases, all of which can be deadly to a certain segment of the population. Despite that, never before have we ever forced mask mandates for illnesses that have a better than 99% survival rate for the vast majority of the population. We could argue that it's safer to wear them, but studies done by NIH show that it is not necessary in the case. Children's are affected emotionally, physically, and psychologically. Some have health issues that can't wear a mask. The consequences of it show up in reduced learning for fear too many kids, particularly those with learning disabilities, as well as loss of social interactions with teachers and fellow students, resulting in feelings of isolation and depression. The simple fact is, when you're distracted by the inability to breathe freely and are hot, you aren't getting the education you're there for. Parents know their kids better than anyone else, and they should have to make that decision on whether they want their child to wear a mask or not. Those parents who chose to have them wear one are absolutely free to do so, but so too should those who see firsthand the effects on their kids be able to say no.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree with, Richard brought up about how difficult this has been for everybody, the whole global pandemic and the, and the mental toll, and I've seen that firsthand. As a full-time teacher, I've seen that with my colleagues, my students, and this has been a really difficult time, and I don't think anybody denies that. And I also agree with what Laura said, at least my understanding of what the school committee's job is, the function of the school committee, has to do with planning, facilities, and budgets, and we hire a superintendent, and we hire educators in order to do those jobs, and I don't feel that it's the job of the school committee to get involved with curriculum or other decisions that are made about, as Bill also mentioned, there's a lot of people involved, state level, federal level, who, who support initiatives that are there to protect the students, and there is a support system that needs to be in place for people who are really in trouble, who could hurt themselves or others. So- So, um, uh, having said that, and having seen what's going on around the country, um, I also feel that, uh, there, there is a time and a place where if there's some conflict or some, um, uh, adversarial type of, um, things happening within a school system or within, uh, groups within our schools, that the school committee would get involved with that and take action to, to rectify and to set, set things, uh, back on track. Now, talking about, uh, the earlier part of the, uh, the question about what's an appropriate role for teachers, I, I think as a teacher myself, that, um, it's very, very important to be aware that I'm a role model. So, our teachers have to be role models, um, they have to engage with the students and have to, uh, encourage them to think critically. Um, I do, uh, agree with, uh, the two gentlemen here who talked about, um, you know, not being a, a overtly political or dividing students into groups that are pitted against each other, but there is a way to teach critical thinking, and I, and I agree with the other candidates that that's really what schools are supposed to do. We want to put out students who know how to think, who are intelligent, who can do research, who can go on to have productive lives in society, and, and that's not going to happen if we try to shield them from every single issue that's out there. Uh, you know, there are classes in political science, there's classes in social sciences, and those are the appropriate places for, for these things to be taught. So, that's up to the teachers more so than it is up to us.
And, uh, Bill?
Thank you. Two things, one, two things that come, I, I had a bunch of notes written down. I, I think I'm gonna go off note, which is probably a bad idea, but. Uh, two things come to mind. One is, you know, when I, when I thought about running for the school committee and decided to run for the school committee, turns out I'm not quite as, as thorough and as up to speed as I thought I was. You know, there's a lot of things I didn't know about the school committee, the role of the school, school committee, all that kind of stuff. So, it's really been an engaging process for me, running for school committee and learning exactly what the role of the school committee is and the role of other people. So, it's kind of a side issue, but, um, the other thing is, that, as I was listening to the other speakers, I thought to myself, well, I'm gonna come to it from a parent's side that, that has three kids that have graduated from college, one still in college. I'm amazed at, I'm amazed at how often we disagree on stuff. Like, here they are in my house for 18 years, I'm raising them with my values. Because they're more critically thinking than I am, they've developed their own thoughts on things. And my standard answer of, well, this is the way it is, just doesn't work anymore. You know, they're older and that, they've, they've kind of figured that out on their own. So, needless to say, it's, it's led to some shortened phone calls and some, uh, some, some discussions amongst us, but I, I do, I do appreciate that. The, the one subject that, the prime example of that to me as I was kind of listening was, you know, I think about math, like math, the way, the way they used to teach math. When I was 10 years old, they said, hey, Billy, two plus two was four, you know, and you didn't question that, you didn't, you know, that was, that was the answer, and you didn't have to worry about it. Well, when my kids were in elementary school, they'd do math, and I would look at it and say, yeah, I, I guess you can get that way, I guess you can get to four that way, but it doesn't really make sense to me. But, again, they, they were becoming critical thinkers, and I appreciated that. As someone that's been touched by a lot of mental health issues within my family, I certainly appreciate the fact that kids are under a tremendous amount of stress. A, a lot of it is self-induced, I think, a lot of it they bring on themselves, and a lot of it is because the world seems to be in a transitional-type phase now. You know, things, like, things that I, it's just a different world, and, uh, and it's an, it's, oh, it, the, the thing that I need to do as a parent is to have faith in their abilities to be critical and to think through things, and hopefully come to the same conclusion that I have and come around at some point, which I don't think is gonna happen. So, certainly support any type of programs that, that go to the core of some of these issues, and I think there is a role for, for the schools to play in that. I'm, I'm not sure it's a, uh, you know, a, 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 a complete role, but I, I do think that they can certainly help in those issues, so, and I welcome that.
Thank you, Bill. And lastly, Samantha.
Thank you. Yeah, when you go last, you do seem to go off script a little bit more, because I don't want to be redundant, but, um, so, as a social worker, right, like, I could talk about sort of the impacts of what we are sort of deeming controversial subjects on our youth, but, the first point I'd like to make is, and I, and it's just sort of a question, would we rather our students engage in sort of a respectful, um, disagreement moderated by a teacher, um, in our public schools, or be online on social media in an echo chamber, engaging in, you know, what I would, um, define as just a really unhealthy dialogue? And it's happening all the time, right? So, if we're gonna talk about things that impact our students, let's talk about social media. So, we're up against parents, students, the community are up against this, this huge struggle on trying to teach our kids how to parse through the noise. There is so much noise, and so much of it is not true, right? So, we do have a job in our public schools to make sure that kids can be critical thinkers. It's not our job to define what's controversial and what's not. There are certain realities in life that are, that are hard, that are ugly, that are uncomfortable. We, as, as, as educators in this district, need to prepare our students to, to think critically. I don't want them to do that. I don't want that preparation to happen outside of the classroom in social media. I just don't. So, yes, I do think we do, we have a role, a huge role. As a school committee, our role is really to model that, right? Like, as Kathy said, we're engaging in really difficult conversations on a weekly basis. We don't always agree. Sometimes the topics are controversial. Sometimes the community disagrees with us. We have social media yelling at us constantly. So, we need to model that as, as, as public officials, um, how to sort of engage in that kind of conversation. The last thing I'd say is, our young people, particularly in the city, are, are models for having these conversations. Our high school students, um, organized the Black Lives Matter rally a couple of years ago. We have mental health ambassador training at our high school. Our, our, um, National Honor Society created a food locker, um, at the high school, right, to support students during this tough time with basic needs like, um, shaving, um, food, toiletries, everything, right? And that was their idea. So, if there's anybody that we should be learning from, it's them. They are the group that continues to, to speak truth to power, um, and they just show up, and they're teaching us something. So, I think we need to follow their lead.
Well, thank you so much. We're three questions through, two more to go, and we're gonna move to Kathy for the first, uh, question. Nice, right, Kathy? And, um, this has to do with your philosophy of education that you bring to the school committee, and how your philosophy informs your funding decisions, because mag, you know, developing the budget or reacting to the superintendent's budget is one of the primary jobs, um, and then passing that budget. So, you know, there are many, um, you can't do all the requests that you have to spend the money, and how do you prioritize the various things, the, the raises, the, the school construction debt, the counseling service, the enrichment programs you could spend money on? There are many things you could spend money on. How do you make those decisions as a school committee? And there's also gonna be, uh, in starting this year, I think already happening, a fairly big amount of federal money and state money coming to the district of Gloucester, school district of Gloucester, and that gives you more opportunity to, to use your philosophy. Go ahead, Kathy.
Okay, so I'll start with the, um, federal money, since that is a, uh, short-term grant. It's over, um, two to three years that that money comes in, and, um, that money is to help.
You could take your.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Um, that money is to help districts, um, have kids, kids catch up on learning loss. And that learning loss can be kids that are behind where they are in their, in their grade. I also view that money as being behind as to what that student's potential should be in that grade. So, it's not just get them up to a small, a low benchmark, it's to get all of them up to where they hopefully would have been had we not been, um, in such a disruptive learning environment. Um, we are using that money for a lot of, um, support positions and teaching positions to make systemic change. Um, we're also looking at new playgrounds for Beaman and Plum Cove, because those playgrounds have been in disrepair for a long time, and, um, as I said before, recess is the favorite class of the day. Um, and we want our kids to have that outlet, to have a place to go that's safe. So, um, that money, because it's short-term, can't be put into things that we know we need long-term, far into the future, because we have to have a funding source, and we would not want to have to cut positions. That would, would be terrible. That would be terrible for morale and, and, um, all that. So, um, my philosophy in education, I was somebody who really liked learning when I was in school, but came from a, parents that didn't go to college. And so, when I was doing well in school, I knew I would go to college, but I started slow with a two-year and said, wow, I really, you know, one semester, I really liked it. So, then I went on for four years, and then I went to work and got my master's. So, I just think every kid has this ability to learn that's not necessarily predictable, but with the right inspiration and the right fundamental, um, information and knowledge, they can see themselves being successful in all sorts of things. I like to say that, um, I want every kid to have that aha moment, and whether it's, oh, my gosh, I know how to do division now, or, oh, my gosh, I know, um, you know, how to, how to use this 3D printer in the middle school, or, or whatever, and I really like this. I want kids to love learning. The motto of our school district is for all students to be successful lifelong learners, and I'm sure all of us can attest that learning throughout our lives keeps our life growing and rich. And I want that for our kids, and, and, um, I think that brings in, internal happiness anyway. So, you know, from a budget perspective, I think we need to be able to do everything. We always try to prioritize things where there's the greatest need at times, both academically and social emotional learning, um, and we have to balance that with things like rewarding our teachers and rewarding our staff. So, we can't, we, we never want to compromise one at the expense of another. We have to keep it all moving ahead. And I know sometimes those things are, um, those priorities may be different in some minds versus others, but the ultimate goal is always what is in the best interest of kids, and to continue to improve Gloucester schools in terms of achievement, and that achievement is just not only test scores, but what do kids want to do after they're done school, and are, do they have a path, and do they have a plan? So, that's my hope, is that everybody leaves our school with some idea of where they can see themselves both enjoying and being successful.
Thank you, Kathy. Keith?
Um, just clarification, uh, when you say time, does that mean that, that's two and a half minutes? Or is that?
Yeah, no, it means you're at two and a half minutes, and you should sort of wrap it up.
Okay, yeah.
And so, some people have been stopping within one sentence, and some people haven't. So, I was thinking that I, what I would do is if people start to go over, I'll go, this is the universal wrap it up sign.
Okay, all right, yeah, just wanted to.
I'll do a wrap it up sign, okay?
Yeah, so, um, my philosophy on education, um, I, I think Kathy heard me say, teach, teach kids how to think, not what to think. I think maybe you heard me say that before. And, here we go, six o'clock. Yeah, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk about critical thinking, and, uh, I just wanted to, uh, say that there's a big difference between critical, critical thinking and critical theory. So, if you've heard the term critical theory out there, honestly, it has no critical thinking in it. So, yeah, I think critical thinking is important, and, um, you know, I, I, I think we're all lifelong learners. Um, I think the moment you stop learning is the moment you die. You start to die, I mean, you gotta keep on learning, sink or swim, uh, and that's the most important thing we can teach our kids. And I, I started my kids early, um, getting them to learn how to come up with their own answers and not relying on me to give them the answers. So, that's my basic philosophy, and, um, as far as how that translates to funding, which is like the major role for the school committee here, uh, it, um, you gotta spend wisely and, and, and think critically, of course, about what is the most important, and, um, one of those things, of course, is the teachers. You would hope that they would be able to afford to live in our community, to support the kids that they're teaching, and, uh, you know, and be a part of the community, and, and I just would hate to see teachers have to, have to take, you know, night jobs during the school year just to live here. And, and so, if we can avoid that as a school committee, I know there's constraints, um, but it's not just about the teachers, like I was reminded of, there's, there's the support staff and, and all down the line. But I, I think that's, that's an important thing that, where that money goes to, and the other thing is, especially nowadays, um, it, it seems odd to me, going back to the first question, that we've displaced veterans and, and put them in St. Anne's, and how old is that school? There's, there's not a modern ventilation system. I don't know what they're gonna do in the winter, but, but we, we do still have a, a health issue here, and I, I just, I'm really curious why we broke around, uh, why didn't we delay? And, uh, going forward, the big question was about, um, what to do about Plum Cove and all that stuff. I, I would love to take a, a site visit and see what kind of issues they have with their facilities themselves, especially with ventilation. If it's up to par, that's great, but, um, I, uh, it seems like from this first question that they're very happy with what the school is and what it's doing for the kids, and, if it's, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And that's, that's my philosophy.
Thank you, Keith. Richard?
I would love to see more diverse classes at the high school level and give kids the, all the abilities and interests, the education they deserve. That involves bringing more trades such as cosmetology, culinary arts, STEM, and maybe even find a way to incorporate the fishing industry, so our local kids can explore fields that interest them without having to compete for the relatively few spaces available at the tech. These types of classes are important for kids who will struggle after they graduate, if indeed they do graduate. Kids all learn different, and the kids that would benefit from these classes the most are getting left behind. Every student should have a bright future with full opportunity, whether it is going to college, entering the workforce, or serving the country in the US military. To achieve that, students need choices. We, as a community, must motivate our children to keep working hard and never give up for reaching their goals. There is actually a shortage in tradesmen due to the aging workforce, so not only do the kids miss out, but so does our community. Half of skilled workers in the US are aged 45 and older. Currently, there are 1.3 million annual job openings, the most acute being manufacturing, considering 83% of tradesmen are somewhat extremely satisfied in their work. We should be encouraging our youth to consider taking the route, if desired, for the best possible future they can have. I would like to pledge all resources available to, on behalf of the school committee and conduct research to explore what it will take to get some of these classes here at Gloucester High School.
Thank you, Richard. Tom?
Yes, so, some school, what I understand, some school committees in the country, that they stagger the elections so that there's always income, people who are experienced on the committee, and that there's not a full turnover at any one time. So, coming into these questions about funding in particular, uh, and I agree with Kathy with that, you know, we want to do it all, and I agree with Richard that, um, we need, you know, tradespeople, and we gotta prepare our students for, for a productive life. And, um, but I want to learn from the people who are here already, who've been doing this for a while. I, I want to take some cues from them, and, uh, they've already been helpful to me. When I got started, I met, had a chance to meet with everybody, pretty much, or talk to everybody on the phone, um, including, uh, one who was leaving, um, and they gave me some very good input, and I, I would want to continue to, to learn, and so that's my philosophy, is to learn from the people who are around me in the community and lifelong learning and all of that. When it comes to the funding issue, and this isn't, hasn't really been the center of our conversation here until now, um, I'm a taxpayer, and, uh, you know, paying taxes i- is a burden. I feel it very strongly. My income declined in, during COVID, I lost a lot of my business, I lost a lot of, a lot of hours at work, I got downsized out of a job, and, um, you know, I really, it hurts to pay those taxes, and I feel it, but my father always told me that paying, having to pay taxes is a good problem. So, the fact that I pay taxes means that I have money coming in. So, I'm one of the lucky ones, I'm, I'm not complaining about that, but I, I just want to point out that, um, the taxpayer, uh, is, we represent them too. So, we need to make sure that every dollar is spent in a way. So we need to make sure that every dollar is spent in a way that we're getting value for that. So price is what it costs, value is what you get. So I would want to look at the budget with that kind of a lens and say, what is the value for this? And can we do it? And should we do it? And what other competing interests? And I think that's the way to operate and to form a consensus. And even where we might disagree about some things, we will come to an agreement and work together. And in the end, my vote is just one vote. And, but I'll work with the committee members and I'll work with the mayor, who's also presides over the school committee. And I'll also work with the councilman and I'll talk to taxpayers, just as I was doing to get on the ballot, because I learned a lot too, like Bill. I learned a lot just talking to people. So, yeah, that would be my philosophy and approach to the funding issue.
Great. Thanks, Thomas. Bill.
Yeah, I've kind of dovetail into what Kathy mentioned. You know, I like to think of, what would be the goal of the Gloucester Public Schools? That you graduated knowing that you had an opportunity to be a lifelong learner. And I don't think that, I don't think you could ask for, you know, you can ask for a lot more than that, but if you leave Gloucester High School saying, boy, I like learning, we've done okay by you, I think. And so I think that's important. I do think with regards to my philosophy, I don't even know if I have a philosophy on it, but I do think that being creative moving forward is really important. I think if COVID taught us one thing, it's that we can be creative about learning and about the template for public education. I think I read recently of an article where, I don't know, the top, the honor students at a particular high school went to school less and did more online because they were capable of doing that. They were in a position going into their final years where they didn't need to be in the classroom five days a week, eight hours a day. They were able to do some of it independently online. So I think the time is right for not only the Gloucester Public Schools, but for all public schools to think a little bit outside the box when it comes to, you know, how we're presenting education, how we're, you know, the template for what works. I also think that, like everybody else, no one's going to say they're against any of the trades or the arts. As a quasi-former athlete, the one thing that I've always enjoyed is that, I've always enjoyed the arts programs. Like I love to, I love to go watch the docksideers or I love to go watch a play because it's something that I wasn't good at. And so I always have a much greater respect and appreciation of that kind of stuff. So anything like that, the trades, I'm in the industrial world. I can tell you that there's a huge need for it. And I think that the funding, as Kathy mentioned, I've learned so much from not only the three incumbent school committee members, but from my neighbor who's stepping down from the school committee, just learning about, you know, that money and what, you know, where that should be earmarked for. I certainly think social, emotional well-being of the students is of the utmost importance. You turn on the news nowadays, you see fights going on all throughout these schools and, you know, all the great posters and everything else is all fine and good. But at the end of the day, you want kids coming to school in a healthy place within themselves. So that's important to me. So opportunity to be a lifelong learner and to be creative and think outside the box a little bit.
Thank you, Bill. Samantha.
Thank you, thank you. So my work as a social worker and in a former job as an in-home family therapist in Gloucester, that work really has framed sort of why I want to be on the school committee and why I want to continue to be on the school committee, but also just my philosophy of education. And really that is that every kid can learn, but every kid comes to that building with a different story, right? And so really what that means is that they need different ways, they need different supports within the building to sort of access what it is that we're trying to teach. And in a lot of ways, kids bring a lot of barriers to learning because of what's happening in their home, what their history is, what their parents' history is, whether or not they have any type of learning disability. And it's our job as a district to recognize those barriers and provide resources to remove them. How that reflects in our budget, I think we've continued to do a really good job of making sure that we're hiring additional staff for social emotional learning. We have more adjustment counselors in our buildings than we probably ever have. We have behavior analysts. We have school psychologists. What am I missing? Mental health clinicians. And then in addition to that, because of our growing English language learner population, we continue to hire more staff to support those students. So that's really how my philosophy is reflected, I think, in the budget. And I would say probably everybody agrees that's already on the school committee and superintendent, that that really needs to continue to be the goal, is to sort of figure out what resources we need in our buildings to remove barriers to learning. In regards to state and federal funding, really what it comes down to is we don't want to put any money towards, we don't want to use that money for something like salaries, for example, salary increases, because it's a one-time funding. We wouldn't be able to sustain that long term. It wouldn't be financially prudent. So there's other creative ways that we are using that money. We are creating some positions and then over in the next couple of years, we'll figure out which positions we want to keep, which ones we want to prioritize in our budget for the long term, or which ones we don't think we need. I want to say something about the Beeman and Plum Cove playgrounds because that's one fun way that we're able to sort of use this money. My husband and his dad, my father-in-law, actually built the playground almost 30 years ago at Beeman, and it's still there. So, you know, I am so excited that we're able to sort of use that money to sort of support kids' ability to get outside, to play on a safe, safe equipment because it's needed. So it's something that we need to be really grateful for because I'm not sure we would be able to really fund things like that without this money.
Thank you, Samantha. And lastly, Laura.
It is funny to go last, but everybody. So children come into this world with this innate sense of wonder and curiosity. I believe that. And, you know, at our best, I think our job in public schools is to create an environment to build on that. But it looks very different, as Samantha said, for different children. Gloucester has a diverse student body. More than half of our student body is considered high needs. So we, as a district, have prioritized and continue to prioritize supports for children with high needs. They may need, they do need additional supports to achieve. And as we've discussed already, we're in a period of high anxiety for students and we need additional supports for that. And those are things that we are providing for, and I think effectively in our operating budget and with our grant funding, which is really intended to help sort of ameliorate the issues that have come up in these last few years. As we, you know, we are, we have been focusing, before we even knew this federal grant money would be what it was, we've been focusing on how to expand the CVTE, the trade program, and how to add more to that program. And so that's something that's in the works now. And someone who can help us do that is in our budget. And one very exciting thing for me is that one thing we may not think about is that some of the kids who did band, right, the K through eight kids who were doing band, they missed a year of learning their instruments. So we're, we have extra, we're using some of our federal funding to get more instrumental teachers in for them to be, to be improving on their music. So I love that. There's two things I want to say. We have amazing lessons learned from this, from this past year. A lot of innovations about how schedules impact kids, if, what you do in the morning. You know, when you have a hybrid schedule with a half a day, those schedules had to work differently. And especially at the elementary level, the kids did great, sort of better than people expected. And so our teachers and our administrators, there are teams looking at, what do we learn here? How can we build on this? And I think, I think that's a huge advantage as we move forward. Another thing I want to say is that we have a model in the elementary schools, there's something called the growth mindset. And kids are taught, and I love this, that if you don't know something, you just don't know it yet. And that is for every child, for every child in our district, they're learning that not knowing something just means you don't know it yet. And that message for me is hugely important. And I love that that's where we are as a district from the beginning. One last thing I want to say is that as things stabilize, one thing I feel like we learned as a district is that being outside during the day is a real benefit for kids. And we did learn that. We had tents out last year for music and specialists and for eating. We haven't been able to do that yet this year. But my hope, as we move forward, would be to integrate more outside time for our students moving forward.
Great. So we're down to 14 minutes and I'm going to just clip it to two minutes each for the last question so I can finish very close to the 90-minute part. And we're going to move to Keith to start this one off, right? And this is the climate resiliency agenda, in what role it would be for students and Gloucester school system. The Cape Ann Climate Coalition, of which I'm a founder and leader. We propose a conversion over time to electric school buses. Is that a good idea? Solar panels could be installed on all the buildings. And we've worked with the city and the city, you know, there's certain, there always seems to be an issue. But it's something the school committee has not really addressed. Curriculum involving local climate initiatives, there's been a lot of curriculum developed and it could be more. Is that appropriate? What measure would you like to see the school committee take the lead on in support in this area of climate? And that includes, of course, school, you know, toxic school buildings is a real thing. And I don't know what the situation is in Gloucester. Perhaps you've done some work on that in the past. But these are all interesting issues. So two minutes each. Take away Keith.
Yeah, so, yeah, I hear you about like having a healthy environment for the kids. That's certainly a priority. Going back to the St. Anne's things, I know we did that before with West Parish. With such an old school, I'm not sure, I wasn't privy to the discussions, but what kind of oversight was there as far as how, how dangerous that school might be? Asbestos and perhaps lead paint, things like, not that, maybe those kids aren't eating lead paint at that point. But, but, you know, air quality certainly is a top concern of mine. For some reason, who would have thunk it, but airplanes are a healthy place to breathe? I never, like, I have a hard time believing that. But it's modern HVAC systems, I don't know if the classrooms are going to get any kind of air quality devices in there, but that would be, I think, a priority for me. Climate resiliency, Mother Nature and humans have always battled each other. It's a part of nature. I think there are certain things that we should keep in mind when we're talking about resiliency. Storm surges certainly, I mean, are a problem. When we're talking about millimeters rise, I looked on the Climate Coalition website. They referred to Woods Hole about some exponential or rising rate of global sea level rise. I didn't see a specific reference for that, but I did look up NOAA's tide gauges and it's a linear trend, just as I suspected. We're talking millimeters per year. But that's, you know, if you look at the Newell Stadium or the New Balance Stadium, was built under sea level initially, I believe. And site locations like that, in hindsight, you know, wasn't a good idea. It should have been built up or what have you. The whole Essex Causeway there, Essex Street, or wherever they call that, 133, you know, susceptible to floods, all major concerns and certainly something we should consider. It's just a leap for me to think that we can actually affect the climate as human beings. The climate affects us. And sure, carbon dioxide is a gas that contributes to greenhouse gases, but the major component of greenhouse gases is water vapor, as we all know. And it's just that, just the thing about electric buses, for instance, unintended consequences about batteries. That disposal of those batteries are, they don't last forever. Where do those go? Not in my backyard. We should think of smart solutions to deal with things like this. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. And go ahead, Richard.
I fully support solar panels installed in our school buildings. Using available renewable energy sources helps not only the school, but also our neighborhoods. Clean energy sources have a lot of benefits, the most obvious of which is that it reduces dependence on gas and oil, which reduces costs to the city while helping the environment as a whole. It is also cost-effective depending on the number of solar panels. Another long-term benefit of going solar is that students can learn valuable lessons from it and it encourages these beneficial practices and can be worked into the curriculum through science and math. For example, Roxbury Latin School's solar system has been used in the school's science curriculum and school has added the interactive kiosk that gives data streaming access to students who can measure the output of each solar panel. As far as the curriculum, we all would have to be very careful with bias and it would need to be focused on the facts, data, and all scientific theories. Not only that, the push is the scientific agenda, the curriculum should also highlight ways we can adapt and overcome, not used as the way to scare children and into activism. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Tom.
Well, I teach music and there's a lot of dispersion in the air and we have these new filters installed and that makes me feel comfortable, but we also get tested every week. So as far as the climate resiliency agenda, electric buses, I mean, I think of it this way. Don't swim against the tide. Tesla's a trillion-dollar company right now. I wish I invested in it a long time ago. A lot of, you know, I'd probably be living in a mansion. But, you know, we do need to think about sustainability in every industry. So I have a textbook that I wrote. It's in 500 universities. It's about the music industry. And I've been writing a second book that's coming out and it's on the music touring and concerts and festivals industry. And I'm devoting a couple of chapters to making that industry sustainable. And that's something we didn't think about years ago. We didn't think about all the plastic waste at concerts. We didn't think about, you know, flying around in private jets. And there's a lot of things that artists could do and that musicians and bands can and will do in the future to, you know, contribute to a solution to this, whatever that is. And I think schools have to be part of that and every industry has to be part of that. So we're not going to swim against the tide with that. I'm sure there'll be lots of incentives. If it makes sense to go to electric school buses, sure, why not? But, you know, the electricity has to come from somewhere, right? We've got these, those windmills now here. Maybe those could power the buses. So, yeah, I'm in favor of that. And the last thing I would say is that, you know, nobody should have to work or learn or teach in a sick building. So if there are issues with the buildings, then that has to, that would be a very strong priority to get remedied quickly so that people are healthy and have a good place to learn.
Thank you, Thomas. Bill.
Yes, I'm assuming we're not going to have a closing statement. We're just going to answer the questions. That'll be it for tonight.
I was hoping we would go quicker and get a one-minute closing statement, but I think probably should fit it in if you want to do one.
Watch me how I weave.
Yeah, you're good at this. Go ahead.
Holy kidding. Yeah, I think it's important. I think you got to look at practicality. I'm in the industrial world and companies have been forced to go green or, you know, that type of stuff. Well, it all comes down to money at the end of the day. Do you have the money? Do you have the resources to do that? I'm also involved with some companies that are developing autonomous vehicles. You go to the Seaport District of Boston now, you'll see vehicles driving around, moving people around with no driver. That's the wave of the future. That's going to be here relatively short. I am a little bit concerned of, I think about the bus issue and like, boy, the shortage of bus drivers, the carbon footprint that buses leave. You know, again, think outside the box. Does the, I coach golf at a local high school. Does the, does the local golf team with eight players need to take a bus 100 miles to play a match? You know, I mean, are there solutions to that that can be, that can be figured out? I think it's important, it's a big issue for younger people nowadays. They're very, much more concerned about the planet than I probably was as a 20-year-old young person. And I'm glad to see it. So I think there is room for curriculum to be developed along those lines for the public schools. Just in closing quickly, I want to say that, first of all, although I'm a big fan of recess, I think my favorite class was always lunch. I kind of liked lunch. Getting that chance to eat. But I also want to just say that I'm a huge fan of the Gloucester Public Schools. Most of my friends graduated from the Gloucester Public Schools, have gone on to do very well for themselves. for themselves. I'm a firm believer in what Bill Goodwin said, the first, the first night I walked into Gloucester High School, which was, you can get to where you want to go from the Gloucester Public Schools. That was true then, it's true today, and I'm definitely on board to try and, try and continue to help develop that. So appreciate your vote on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Samantha?
Thank you. So I'm just going to use this opportunity again to sort of advocate for sort of our approach to consolidating schools, because in that process, and to be honest, I'm not on the building committee, so I don't even know how involved this is. Kathy could probably speak for days about how involved the process is to make sure that the choices that we're making are sustainable, are environmentally friendly. West Parish is LEED certified, is it gold certified? Gold? Yes. Something. And, you know, the new school, East Gloucester Vets, same thing. So as we continue to rebuild or renovate, in the case of Omeley, right, we're putting in new windows. Those, those windows were original to the building and so we're, you know, clearly if, as we replace them, they're going to become more energy efficient. So in all the decisions that we're making about our infrastructure, this comes into play, you know, in every discussion that we have. You can't really avoid it at this point. So that's as far as our role on the school committee. In terms of curriculum, this is just another one of those topics that I think we need to take the lead from the young people in this community. They are encouraging us to make changes that none of us ever imagined making. I have a sister who's 10 years older than me and she is adamant about certain things. And I think we have a lot to learn and I think our young people are the ones who are, who are really speaking up and teaching us and leading the way. In terms of the electric buses, you know, as our, as our lease comes to an end with our, with our current buses, I think it's absolutely appropriate to investigate what that looks like as a district, along with, you know, smaller vehicles. We've talked about smaller vehicles, so that you don't need to take a huge bus, to your point. So I guess to wrap it up, I would appreciate your vote on November 2nd. I'm a graduate of Gloucester Public Schools, so, you know, to Billy Goodwin's point, you know, you can get to anywhere from Gloucester Public Schools. I'm, I'm a testament to that and I appreciate everything it's given me and I can, I hope to continue to give to Gloucester as a community.
Thank you, Samantha. And we're going to Laura.
Thank you. So, you know, again, our children, our students don't live in a vacuum. They're so aware of climate issues. Climate is already part of the curriculum. When I was running, two years ago, I attended an assembly at the high school, which was a Mass Audubon. It was a company, it was a work together with Mass Audubon and the Science Department at the high school, where they were mapping where sea level would be at different parts. I mean, they're, they're on it, right? And from elementary school on, they're looking at waste in the water. They're, they are so aware of things that we weren't aware of. And, and I think, I think that's just going to continue. I think that's organic. I think science and life now tells us, and we live, we live here, right? We see the changes. We see what's happening around us. So I think that's there. As far as the school committee, you know, it's interesting, because I was looking at the electric school bus issue, and of course that, I think it's very useful. We have been looking at go yellow to go green. So every time, every school bus saves 30 cars. Every, every, that's how many cars are off the road when kids take the bus to school. 36 now? So, right, we were learning, I had heard about 30. And so one of the things that we've already done is lower the, the amount of distance you have to be from a school to get free transport. We're trying to increase how many kids can get on the bus, both because it's, it's, you know, it's good for families and it's better for, for our roads, for our environment. There's less exhaust when more kids are taking the bus. So, so we're working on that and there's, I don't think there's a limit to how much we could do to, on the environment at this point, but there are budget concerns. And so each of our new buildings is LEED certified. Those are ways to improve air quality, improve ventilation, bring in more light. So those, those pieces of all of our infrastructure as we, as we move forward are important. I wanted to also say about air, just because you talked about the pesticides issue here. One important thing is that people can bring issues to the school committee. So a member of the Cape Ann Climate Coalition and someone else brought an issue to us about what are the pesticides being used in our schools? And that has led to us investigating that with the Board of Health and we're moving forward to really figure out, you know, how this works. And I think that's a really great thing for the community to know, is that if you have an issue and you know the facts about that issue, we welcome learning about it, because that helps us improve our schools and our, and our community. In closing, I'm, I'm just a big fan of Gloucester Public Schools. I didn't attend them. My children attend them and I hope for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you. And now our last speaker for the evening, Kathy Clancy.
Okay. So definitely now I feel what it feels like to be last, because everybody said what I was going to say. I will say that everything we do in terms of our new buildings has been about getting more efficient in our school buildings and making them as safe and healthy as we possibly can, as well as effectively teaching our, our students. We have been, our transportation director has been getting up to speed on the electric buses. Our current lease goes for the next two years, which we think will be a good timing to kind of understand what the whole electric bus would cost and what the investment would be and what the payout would be. With respect to veterans in East Gloucester combining, we've definitely have looked at ways and are working with safe routes to schools to try to encourage people to do things like be on the bus. The second thing is this concept of walking buses, where families might meet further away and maybe one parent escorts the kids to school, which not only would be phenomenal in terms of community building, but also a very healthy thing for kids to realize they can still walk to school, you know, this foreign concept that we all used to do. So it's nice to get more kids on their, you know, walking and biking. So we are always constantly thinking about how, you know, how our actions as a school committee can help make our community more efficient and, and save us money, because clearly we have other needs that we would much need to put more resources in. So, so that's always, you know, one of those benefits. If we can find a way to save money and help the environment, we're going to choose it every time. So I think, I'll just finish with that, on that answer, because everybody has said a lot of great things. So I have a son who's now a senior and he will graduate in June. I could not be more proud of him for going through Gloucester Public Schools from kindergarten. We have had a wonderful experience as, as a family in our schools. I think our schools provide kids with really awesome and unique opportunities. And I hope you vote for me on November 2nd. I've been on the committee for a long time and I think I bring a wealth of experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And thank you, everybody, for participating so, so respectfully and so well. And I'm sure we'll have a good school committee from this group. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.